And we'll like.
Could we ask?
We're up. Okay, Ethan.
So go ahead. Thank you all for having me. My name's Ethan. I am the campaign manager for School Board School. We are a local nonprofit. We do issues around connecting people to school boards, state boards of education, and education justice related issues more broadly, and train people on how to get involved in making a difference in their local school boards. And in some instances, train people to run for school board and how to be an effective school board member. But in particular, I'm going to be talking today a little bit about school board elections. So I want to go ahead and start off and just ask you a couple of quick questions to see kind of how much and how familiar we are already with local school board elections. So first question, will there be school board candidates on the ballot this November? Go ahead and put in the chat, yes or no?
Republicans are a very good precedent that will.
If you know.
What if we don't know?
You don't know, that's fine. The answer is yes, we will have school board candidates on the ballot this November. Do any of you know how many school board candidates in CPS we will have on the ballot?
Three or four.
We will have three on the ballot this year. That's perfect. Do you usually vote for school board candidates? How many of you regularly vote for school board candidates?
Yes.
Awesome. Yeah, that's great. So we're going to start with the problem. So I'm excited to talk with you guys about this year's school board election because school boards have such a huge impact on our community. But voter turnout of school board elections is usually really low, and we need your help to change that. So why does school boards matter? School boards have always been important, but now more so than ever. The CPS school board candidates on the ballot are facing some of the toughest challenges in a generation. We know that our students have to make up a lot of lost academic ground due to the pandemic and the decisions these school board members make will play a big role in determining how quickly our communities' children make progress. They'll also be managing a budget bigger than the cities.
They're still very married.
The huge influx of federal funding from the pandemic is going away and with inflation.
Diane, there's somebody in the background talking.
There we go. So board members will have to decide how to use limited dollars at a time when our students have huge needs. School board, school board members are also responsible for things like renewing the superintendent's contract and figuring out the busing problem we have in CPS. There are huge issues that impact all of us, no matter if we have kids in CPS or not, because we know that we cannot have a strong thriving city or a strong thriving neighborhood without strong thriving schools. So how many of you are familiar with CPS? How many of you either went to CPS schools, had kids or grandchildren that went to a CPS school? Awesome. That's great. So we know that if you have kids in CPS, you're more likely to vote in a school board election. That's what our data has shown. Unfortunately, a large group of our voter base are people that regularly vote, but they don't feel connected to the issue. They either didn't come from the area, they don't have kids in the district, they don't have family in the district, they don't see why they need to vote in a school board election because they don't feel the impact directly. But it's important to look at how school boards affect everyone, regardless of whether or not you're a teacher or if you have children in the district. There's the importance of education on a community. An excellent education system can lead to improved opportunities, stronger economies, and increased social mobility. By voting in school board races, you're contributing to the betterment of your community and the education of future generations, which we all know is incredibly important for educating the next group of young voters, of young leaders, elected officials. All of these people are going to have a huge impact on society, and school boards are going to influence them and impact their education outcomes. We can look at the education quality. We have to work to close performance gap, performance gaps, especially in a post-COVID environment. We saw with the pandemic and shutdowns that a lot of our kids now are not at the same place academically that they should be. And that's a huge problem. Now, there is no, you know, one size fits all solution to this, but that's what we elect our school board members to do, and it's going to be a huge issue over the next few years. Now, our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods and our schools are intrinsically connected. Strong schools make for a vibrant, strong, and healthy community and neighborhood, and also, strong neighborhoods make for strong schools. It's all connected. If we're looking at tax abatements, or if we're looking at, you know, families being encouraged to move into certain neighborhoods, it all ties back to our schools. A lot of our messaging right now is we're looking at suburban districts as well. We have partners in Anderson and Forest Hills who are having to battle extremist candidates in November to fight for control of their local school board. And we know that a lot of the reasons people move to Anderson is for Forest Hill School Districts. They know that the quality of the schools in that neighborhood are a reason for them to move there. But if the education quality goes down, if we see the school board overrun by extremists who want to ban books and attack our LGBTQ youth, then people aren't going to want to move into that neighborhood, and it's going to affect the economy overall. Another huge issue we've seen as we're talking to parents and children across the district is gun violence. Gun violence is now the leading cause of death for children and teens in the US, and we know that this is something that impacts us on a very local level. School boards matter, and they have a big say in how all of this runs. So it's really important that we look at school board candidates and school board policies that are going to impact local gun violence and ensure that our kids are safe. We know that gun control and all of these federal issues aren't something that our school boards can control, but they can contribute to making a safer environment for our kids and for advocating for safer policies overall, as we've seen our board here in CPS do. Another incredibly important issue right now is LGBTQ plus protections. Extremist school board members across the country are taking actions to harm our LGBTQ plus students. And we've seen in Florida, for instance, schools are trying to ban trans youth from using their restrooms that identify with their gender identity. We've seen attacks on literature and book bannings, and all of these things that are directly targeted against our queer youth. Another big issue we're seeing right now is mental health. We know that this generation is facing a mental health crisis that is often going unaddressed in our schools. Our students are facing a crisis. In 2021, more than four in 10 students felt persistently sad or hopeless, and nearly one-third experienced poor mental health from the CDC. And we've seen a number of increasing suicides as well across our local schools. Justin Anderson and our Forest Hills School District in the past year, there were seven student suicides. So this is an incredibly big issue affecting our young people, and our school board members play a big part of that. Our young people spend so much time in school that the environment and the culture that they're around impacts their mental health and access to counselors. Many youth maybe don't have access to insurance and therapists that they would be able to get through their family, but having access to school counselors can be life-changing and life-saving for a lot of our youth. Allocating funding to address this crisis will be a huge part of the job for these school board members over the next few years, especially as we come into a massive budget and a big deficit here in CPS. So who's running? There are a lot of candidates running across the different school districts in the greater Cincinnati area, but School Board School, we're focusing here on CPS for right now. It's inside public schools. As of now, six people have picked up petitions to run for city, for school board here in Cincinnati. That means they're collecting signatures, and the board of elections is checking those, and hopefully, if they meet those guidelines, they'll be on the ballot. So it's really important that you all know who is on the ballot for school board this year. So School Board School is, to preface this, we are a nonpartisan organization. We do not endorse any candidates or oppose candidates for public office, but we do want to educate people and make sure people are aware of who's running and the views that those people hold. So I'm going to go ahead and drop in the chat here, all of the candidates running in CPS this year, the six. Currently, there are two incumbents, Ben Lindy and Eve Bolton, who have picked up petitions to run for reelection. I've linked there to Ben's website and to Eve's CPS bio page. She doesn't have a website up yet. And then there are four new candidates who have never run for office before. Kendra Mapp, Brian Cannon, Kimberly Huckleby, and Paul James Shield. I've included the website informations that we could find for the ones who had information public. Paul does not have any information available yet online, but we're going to be creating a website and a candidate guide. So once we have that information, I'll be sure to share it with you all. Beyond that, I'm going to talk a little bit about the campaign that I'm running with School Board School. We need people to get involved. The first thing you can do is vote. Voting in school board races is absolutely vital. We've been looking at the data over the past few months to look at kind of what is happening with the campaign, why people aren't voting, and how many people actually vote in school board races. And analyzing the data from 2021, which was the last CPS school board cycle, we noticed that a number of people came out and they voted for mayor, they voted for school board, they voted for levies, but they didn't vote for school board. In some precincts, we had up to 200% drop off. That means people that came out to vote but didn't complete their ballot. A number of reasons that we've identified, either people didn't know who to vote for, they weren't familiar with any of the candidates, and they didn't want to make an uneducated vote. They didn't know who to vote for, they weren't familiar, they chose not to vote. Another big thing is that people don't understand why school boards matter, matter. They see that, and for them, it just doesn't resonate. It doesn't click. So they don't understand the importance of school board race, which is where we come in. So we're going to need people to show up and volunteer to help turn out voters this November. Our public schools are the foundation of our democracy. We all know that. And they're under attack at the state level, and our local school board candidates are on the front lines of preserving democracy. So I'm going to go ahead and chat in a link to our forum real quick. So we are collecting volunteers, and we are needing as many people as possible to come out and volunteer with us. We're going to need people to canvas and knock on doors, to phone bank, host house parties, post on social media, excuse me, and make presentations in your neighborhood. So we're going to look for people to activate your networks. We need people to talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends, make sure that as many people as you know are turning out to vote in school board races, because these races are critical, and increasing turnout is absolutely vital. So thank you all for having me. I'd love to take any questions you all have. Yeah.
I, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
First of all, you want people to canvas, but we're pretty canvassing for a person. And that's not what your canvas is going to, what is, what is your canvas going to include?
Yeah, so we have literature that is going to direct people to a candidate guide. So we have a candidate guide with all six candidates running in CPS, and then our suburban candidates as well. Those are Norwood, Forest Hills, and Lakota School Districts. So we want to educate people and make sure that people are aware of the school board elections happening. We want people to get out and vote, and then we also want them to know who's on the ballot and what those candidates' positions are on the issues. So those are the biggest things that canvassing is going to be doing, and we're going to be targeting people that we know are going to vote. There are going to be people that we know will vote, but they're likely to not vote for school board because they don't understand the importance, or they don't see a connection to the district. So that's the big thing with the canvassing.
So can you? People don't seem to have any trouble voting for or against school levies. How, how can you make a connection between the people that are running school boards and the levies?
Yeah, that's a big issue, is people understand the financial impact of a levy, but they don't necessarily understand the financial impact of school board members. And school board members control a budget that is bigger than the cities. CPS has a budget that is almost two times the size of the cities, but most people don't know that, and that's a huge issue. So if we can connect that to people, maybe that'll help them understand.
Sure. Yeah, I got two things. I just got my Hamilton County Real Estate Tax Bill today, and all just under two-thirds goes to Cincinnati Public.
Right.
And the other thing is, it's, if you're not endorsed by the teachers' union, it's almost impossible to win. Because I guess the teachers vote and encourage other people to vote, but it's, it's near impossible if you don't have their endorsement.
Yeah, that's definitely a big thing we've seen. So we're working with CFT, actually. We're partnering with them to hopefully activate their teacher networks to help get out volunteers and hopefully increase turnout.
Really?
Uh, yeah. My question is, it seems to me that this is a duplication of the effort that the League of Women Voters makes to send out the questionnaire to those running for office, and then they publish it in that wonderful tabloid form. And I have gone quite a number of times to the offices of CPS over in on Oak Street or wherever it is over there to listen to the candidates running for office present themselves. I know that my level of commitment to this sort of thing is not average. But I'm saying this to ask you, who is guiding your priorities, where you're putting time, effort, and money? Because it seems to me that it's a very important thing. I knew, for example, that the CPS budget is larger than the city's budget, but I bet if you ask that question, very few Cincinnati people know that. So that's one thing, but my question is, there are so many crucial issues coming up in August and November. I want to know who is encouraging you to spend time, energy, and money? And what are they telling you will make the biggest difference regard to this particular issue of electing school board members? Because I got so excited when I heard the woman whose name, of course, now I'm not going to remember, who came to one of our Baldur Democracy meetings and spoke to us about why she thought she'd be a great candidate for the state school board. And she was elected, and you know what? The governor figured out how to cut their feet off immediately. So that discourages even the hardiest souls.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, y'all, good points. We actually are working with the League of Women Voters. Certainly working with them to help bring them in and hopefully get them involved in the candidate guide. Ours is going to be a bit larger and focused more regionally as well, and we're also hoping to publish ours to focus on some different questions than the League of Women Voters questionnaire. So we're working with a group called Honesty for Ohio Education and the Honesty Coalition, which is doing a lot of work statewide around education-related issues and messaging. So they're kind of helping guide our messaging. In terms of the data standpoint, we have a data team and a couple of data scientists who have been helping us analyze all of this data. And then we have a friend of mine, Gavi Begtrup, who has ran for state rep a few years ago. He is helping advise us on the data end of things and figuring out which precincts we target with our canvassing efforts. But additionally, we really want to make sure our efforts are making a difference, and we know there are so many important things on the ballot, whether it be in August or whether it be in November with the reproductive rights amendment. So there's a lot happening. We also know that school boards are taking an unprecedented attack from the far right. That over the past few years, far-right extremists have been running for school boards at the local level, and they've been winning. In Forest Hills, the majority of the school board members are extremely far right, and have been doing things like canceling Diversity Day. You know, doing these things that are harming our students, and we know that these races are absolutely crucial. So we really think that we're going to be able to make an impact by talking to voters one-on-one. And in the past, there have not really been coordinated efforts to do that around school board races. So we're hoping to really energize people by talking to them one-on-one and then using relational organizing to really expand people's networks and multiply the voters.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Ethan, my question is, you've described yourself as nonpartisan. What is, one of these individual turns, turns out to be one of these far-right candidates. Do you still list them? Do you promote them, just like everyone else?
Yeah, so legally, we have to give each candidate equal airtime, but we are going to be clear in all of our messaging and making sure that people are aware of the stances that each candidate takes. And what we've seen from our polling is that when voters hear from candidates and they compare the two messages, they compare someone who is running on an extremist platform of banning books and attacking queer youth and defunding our schools versus a candidate that wants to protect students and ensure proper education, that, excuse me, the extremists lose. And that when voters are presented with the options and they actually see the platforms of the two candidates, the progressives tend to win in school board races. It's just a matter of getting that message out there and making sure that people are aware of the platform speech candidate on the ballot. And from the polling that we've looked at, that's the biggest indicator.
Well, I would assume you're getting your message out during the training, but how, how, do you, have you had any of these far-right people in your training?
We actually have not yet, so we, we haven't, but we're definitely being very careful in terms of our volunteers and all the people supporting us. We are making sure that they are values aligned with us. They hold those same progressive values that School Board School does. It's just a matter of when we're promoting actual candidates, legally, we have to provide equal airtime.
Okay. Sean?
One, one thing a lot of people don't realize is the Republicans in Columbus just cut the, the income tax, which means less money going to cities, townships, and everything. So they're giving you a break, and then they're making, like Cincinnati and the townships, raise your taxes to pay for everything that they've been paying for. And a lot of people don't realize it. It's, oh, look, more money. But then, you know, the school levy's got to be, you know, passed, the other levies have to be passed, and it's just, they're robbing people, people, Peter to pay Paul, and people don't realize what's going on.
Yeah.
No, they, they don't. And that's another really important thing, is making sure that people are aware of what's happening at the state level. That's not directly related to this campaign, but we are hosting a number of sessions about what's happening at the State House upcoming on June 14th. I just put this in the chat. We're doing a what's happening at the State House session, how to support LGBTQ plus youth and students. Representative Rachel Baker is coming. The National LGBTQ Plus Victory Fund and the National Center for Human Rights are all going to be involved with this. So we're doing an online session. It's a Wednesday night. We're hoping to talk a lot about what's happening at the state and then connect that locally, because what's happening at the state level in the State House is absolutely impacting our education here locally. It's all tied together.
Did you say that most of the candidates at Forest Hills are on the far right?
Yeah, currently, of the current board, there's only one, one Democrat, Leslie Rasmussen. She's fantastic, but pretty much every other member of the school board is pretty far to the right. Yeah, Forest Hills is very similar, if you can follow what's been happening in Florida with a lot of the education bills in Florida. Forest Hills is very similar, what's happening there.
And, and by the way, Ohio, the Ohio Legislature is passing a similar restroom bill. They're trying to, now, they're going.
Really bad legislation at the State House right now. That's very scary for our queer community. Yeah.
Yeah. They're changing our constitution as fast as they can.
Yeah, we're trying.
They just don't want citizens to control it. So interesting. So Ellen?
So would you say a little bit more about the school itself? When courage, are, are you simply offering it to people who have taken out petitions? Or are you looking forward to encouraging people as some of the other schools or candidates have done? Encouraging them by teaching them what it's about, and maybe they'll pick up a future elect.
Yeah. In terms of actually training people to run for office, School Board School does a yearly program where we actually train people on how school boards work, how to run for office for a school board race, and how to, how to be an effective school board member. We've had a number of people who have taken our program run. If you're familiar with Mary Weinberg or Dr. Karine Moffett, who are current CPS board members, they are both alumni of our School Board School Training Program. So they went through our program before they ran for office. So we're really invested in kind of training the next generation of school board leaders and education advocates. So that's another big part of what we do at School Board School. That's not quite the area I work in, but we do have a number of staff focused directly on that, is getting people involved and trained, and hopefully that a lot of these people end up running for school board. We had, if you don't know, Marlena Brookfield, she ran for school board in 2019. She was a School Board School alumni as well, so we trained her before her campaign. So there have been a number of our alumni who've run for office, and luckily, a couple that have actually won here in CPS.
Dan?
I'm remembering 20 or 30 years ago, hearing about stealth candidates, right-wing candidates running for school boards. So I haven't heard too much about it in recent years, but I wonder if you know whether any of the announced candidates are far right?
Yeah, from what we have seen, every announced candidate for CPS is a Democrat. I'm not familiar with Paul James Shield. I've not met him, and I can't find much information on him online yet, but we've reached out to him in hopes of getting more of his platform information. But the other, both incumbents are Democrats, and Kendra O'Brien and Kimberly are all Democrats.
And based on what somebody said just a few minutes ago, that it's, it's almost impossible to get elected without the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers endorsement. Does that mean that we don't really have anything to worry about on that score?
In CPS, hopefully, but in our suburban districts, that's the big concern, especially in Forest Hills and Lakota, is the Democratic Party and the teachers' union don't hold as much influence in those areas. So it's much easier for right-wing candidates to get elected.
That makes sense.
Unfortunately.
Any other questions?
Are, do you have affiliates outside of this area, like outside of Greater Cincinnati, Hamilton County?
Yeah, we don't currently, but hopefully in the next few months, we'll be rolling that out. And we, we have, we actually have groups in Texas and a few other states that are hoping to pop up and actually become School Board School affiliates and start their own chapters. So that's, that's in the works right now to start expanding that nationally.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
You have an impressive board. I'm looking online.
Thank you. Yeah, we've got a, a really, in my opinion, a really strong team and a group of supporters.
Where are they headquartered at?
Our office is actually downtown, right across from Hard Rock Casino. We're in the Pendleton area.
Okay.
And Ethan, what's your role with School Board School?
So I'm the campaign manager for our election awareness campaign. So my entire project is increasing, increasing turnout in school board races is my project. Yeah. And then Alisa, our founder and our executive director, she couldn't join us tonight, unfortunately, but she, she actually was a CPS board member about 10 years ago.
Wow.
So what is your funding? Where do you get your money?
Yeah, so we're a nonprofit, so most of our money comes from grants and outside fundraising. And a lot of, most of, I'd say the majority is from grants, national grants. Yeah. I don't, I don't have, yeah, sorry.
How old is School Board School?
Uh, six years, I believe. Five years last year, so I, I think six, or upcoming six, yeah.
A great idea.
Thank you. Yeah, we do, I think we do, we do a lot of great work, and I'm really excited to be working with this team. Yeah. Well, I'm also going to put my email in the chat here. It's just ethan@schoolboardschool.com or dot org, sorry. So if anyone ever has any questions or wants to get involved or find ways to engage with us, we're also on Facebook and Instagram, and I'd love to, love to connect with any of you.
That's great, Nathan.
Great to be so involved. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
And I have one more question. If I were to volunteer and go to my neighbors would be one thing, but otherwise, you said we would be talking to people that you know would be compatible with our thinking. So does that mean you have the, you know, the list of people that have voted and how they voted? Is that what we're going to be using?
Yeah, so we're in the process of getting our voter file access. Hopefully, we'll be rolling that out in the next month or so. We'll be targeting people that we are considered likely voters, but won't, but haven't voted in school board races. So people that will, that have, like, voted for mayor or Congress, but they haven't voted for school board races. So we're hoping to get the, increase the number of regular school board voters, increase turnout that route. get the, increase the number of regular school board voters, increase turnout that route.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely.
Good idea.
I thought we had a secret ballot. How would, how would that be public information that somebody voted for some offices and not others?
Well, we can look at the data and identify based off the precincts. We can see the number of voters who voted in the precinct and then compare that to the number of people who voted in the school board race in particular. By that, we can do the math and identify that there were a certain number of people who voted but didn't vote for school board. And in most of these precincts, it's the vast majority of the voters. So it's just a simple matter of taking the number of registered voters who did in that precinct, which that information is public. We then take.
Okay, so it's, it's aggregate numbers. It's not individual.
No, yeah, yeah. We don't have any kind of secret information on your ballot. Yeah. Yeah.
That's, that's reassuring. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Oh, I just wanted to mention that Katie Hoffman is the state school board member that uh was referenced earlier without naming her.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Katie's a, a supporter of School Board School and she's actually speaking at one of our events coming up.
She's great.
Love her.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you so much for having me.
Appreciate your being here and you're welcome to stay with us if you like. Uh, but we understand if you need to move on.
I actually have another call to get to, but I appreciate you all taking the time to have me tonight.
Take care.
Have a great night.
Thanks.
Bye-bye. Cam, I go ahead and stop the recording. Here we go.